Lost.
Yes, sir? You are so good to me. Thank you, sir.
Good to go, Dave. Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 15, 2016. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor DePena.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Almonte.
Here.
Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselor LaPlante.
Present.
And Counselor President.
Present. Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands before the Constitution. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselors, we have two sets of minutes for approval. Can I please get a motion to approve minutes from January 5th and January 19?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Public participation. First person in the list is H. Malley. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaign promise of safe Lawrence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and the Senior Officers Union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police department and support their union. Our city has been great city because of a hard-working DPW worker, a few workers, and the best leadership. Our DPW worker are the best. We, the citizen, demand of you support our DPW workers in their collective bargaining negotiation. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrifice their safety so our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raley is moving forward. Turnaround plan has created more Level 1 school, more higher school graduate. Our children have a hope for the best public school, but our job as a citizen is not over. We support our teachers and their hard-working union. Remember, your campaign promise, save Lawrence and prosperous Lawrence is only possible you as our elected official support our police department and their union, our firefighters, and hard-working DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person is Francis Yelek. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Francis Yelek. I live in the great city of Lawrence. I moved to 245 Broadway. This is a disgrace. In this city of Lawrence, we need 40 beds. We need it in South Lawrence. Why? Women are found dead underneath the Central Bridge. People freeze in the common. If somebody has to go to the police station, they should let them in and use the bathroom. They do. And they can stay up to a week on the outside of the police station. We need communication. Forty beds, why? At Daybreak Shelter, there's only 12 beds for women. What a disgrace. What a disgrace. 12 beds for women. At YMCA, they have a battered woman shelter, which is good. We need 40 beds in South Lawrence. Like, I saw Estella Reyes, and I was talking to her about it. We gotta push this. Sandy, all the women, we gotta push it. The men, we gotta push it. We don't want to find... Underneath the Central Bridge, I remember the mayor sent us there, and we cleaned, because the governor was coming, there was all kinds of garbage there. We cleaned it up. We did a good job. But people can't stay underneath the bridge no more if we have a shelter. People can't be living at Buckley Garage like a home. We gotta clean that up. We gotta turn around, make 40 beds at a million a year. The churches, the politicians, the city councils, Mayor Rivera, we gotta get together and do it. One year, we should have it done. $1 million, I'll donate 25. I'm sure you will all donate money. This is a disgrace. We don't want to find one person, woman, dead, or one person dead in the common. They have to have a pla... The idea, you... My idea would be around the Elecon Pool, but it doesn't even have to be in a wooded area. Whatever you say, but let's get going. Let's get it done. Forty beds for women, think about it. If you really care about women, you'll care about the shelter. And within one year, we should have it done. I'll donate 25. I know you people will donate money. Everybody here, we don't want to find one person dead and frozen to death. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person is James Patrick O'Donohue.
I'll be as brief as possible. It's not easy to come before you to say these things, but I feel that they have to be said. And I will furnish documents upon request to anyone through your email. On Friday, December 11, 2015, Mayor Rivera claimed victory over the recall by 655 signatures. Yet, on Monday, December 14, 2015, he felt the need to post the signatures of the recall petition onto Facebook. Mayor Rivera once said, "We have the petitions in hand. We will begin to review them for forgery and fraud. Let us know if you see someone who didn't sign and their name is on one of these sheets." I was reading on Facebook, and a Ms. Lee M. Fickenworth of 44 Exeter Street responded to Mayor Rivera's request, saying that her friend Michelle Melanson's address had been used by someone to sign the recall. Upon reviewing the recall petitions, it is observed that a signature in the name of Carlos Nieves appears on Sheet 35C at Melanson's address of 16 Lennox Street. This can be found on the scribd.com pages that the mayor, excuse me, put on the Internet. It's on Page 139 of the 1,472 pages. Now, when comparing Carlos J. Nieves' signature on his and Michelle Melanson's mortgage on file at the Essex North Registry of Deeds in Book 12626, Page 307, one can discover that Carlos Nieves' signature on the recall petition is in the same cursive style as Michelle Melanson's signature on their mortgage document. I think that someone should ask for an investigation. I know you may be wanting to pass this off to the Board of Registros, but I think you need to do more than that. Thank you. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Dick Russell. I reside at 34 Cross Street. I'm not sure about the procedures at various committees about commenting on various items as they're brought up, but according to an Eagle Tribune story on this subject, this will be brought up on a Thursday, and I cannot be present, so I'll take potshots at the issue early. Before the city council tackles issues with residency requirement for city employees, I suggest they clean up their own act first. I know I'm not the only city resident thoroughly fed up with the antics of the council with some of their prima donna actions, including no-shows at council and committee meetings, late arrivals, early departures, and being ill-prepared to discuss various council matters. That being said, until the teachers are required to be city residents, don't talk to me about a residency requirement for other employees. Don't feed me the line that the state law allows the teachers to live outside the city. State laws are not perfect. A good example is the fiasco involving the lack of procedure for vetting signatures on the recall petitions. Three recalls in the last four or five years from one city should have lit a fire under the state legislature, but nothing. I'm dead-set against forcing the police officers to live in the community they police because of the possibility of retaliation against them or their families for doing the job. Police work is a difficult job dealing with people who see police officers an impediment to their lifestyles. Besides, when was the last time you saw a reunion give up part of their contracts without being given something else in return? In my humble opinion, there are jobs in the city that there are not, that there are citizens not capable of performing. All the words of how much the city will improve with all employees living here is a crock of crap. A good portion of the residents in Lawrence that have means, don't even shop in Lawrence. Unless you're looking for spandex clothing, beauty supplies, barber shops, or automotive parts at retail or five-fingered discount prices, everyone goes across the borders. What incentives are there to make the prospective city employees want to live here? How many outsiders will want to move into a place with a Dodge City reputation? As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person is Levane Abraham.
My name is Levane Abraham of Two Shapless Streets. I live near Lot X, and we have concern about neighborhood issues and a couple of contractors renting the properties, and we don't know in the future what's gonna happen. I just came in to raise that issue. Thank you. I don't have much to say about it.
Thank you. We will be discussing that issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, I'm assuming this for the record. Before we continue, I'd like to recognize former Mayor Mike Sullivan, who's in the audience today. Thank you for the great service that you provided to our city during your tenure. Now, moving on to public hearings. Document 26915. Mr. Kevin Sullivan as well. Thank you very much. Document 26915, Mr. Clerk.
Document 269, 2015. Notice hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15, 2016, in council chambers. At 7:00 PM, the purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to revise ordinances for the city of Lawrence by adding a following new paragraph to the municipal code concerning handicap parking to be considered in proper order. Osgood Street, East Side, to 1.65 feet southerly of the intersection of Abbott Street, to 1.85 feet southerly of the intersection of Abbott Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances contrary, they hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30-day.
Motion has been made and properly second. Waiving the 30 days. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice for Document 29415.
Document 294, 2015. Notice hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15, 2016, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. Purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony input and public input concerning a proposed petition to the abandoned portion of a public roadway known as Keelaw Street, presently owned by the city of Lawrence, Mass. More particularly described with a description that followed and was published. Copy of the reference plan and documents pertaining to the proposed abandonment by the city was available to the public viewing for examination through the Office of Community Development on Essex Street and in the office of City Clerk on business days between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Persons wishing to be heard on the matter shall be provided the opportunity. This matter was published in the newspaper on March 1 and March 8.
Public hearing is now open. Does anyone in the audience wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made.
Second for discussion.
Properly second. Counselor Maldonado.
Ah, yes, it's Liza here.
Ms. Inponge.
Yes.
Yes. I believe that at the last meeting, when we were discussing this subject matter, I asked the question as to whether, when we abandon a city property, whether somebody can take possession of that property at will. And there was no answer to that question. Do we know what's gonna happen to that property? I know that we intend to sell the property to the abutters.
Correct.
Eventually, so... And again, my question is, when we abandon a property, can somebody take possession, can claim possession of that property?
Well, there's two methods of taking by abandonment, and one of those is if a street is gonna go to land court and to do this. And the common law says that when a public way is abandoned by a municipality or by the owner of that property, it goes to two abutting properties, 50-50 down the middle, each side.
When the property is abandoned.
That's when it's just abandoned, right. And so, that would be a situation, maybe like with our alleyways, we've dealt with that in the past, something like that, or other street, if this wasn't. The city is actually taking the affirmative step, though, in this case. They'll come into formally abandon the streets with the idea that we are gonna turn around to sell these properties to the, to clear title, in essence, on the properties, to make these properties a valid title, so that the... In both the situations, the cases I have tonight, there's a single person owns all the land on both sides of the street. So essentially, that person would be acquiring these. If they had gone through the land court process, which takes more than a year, they essentially would have, they could have picked it up without cost. But I think, but we agreed it was that we're gonna go through this process, bring it through the city, abandoning it, giving up our right by way of a deed, and give up all title to the property. And in essence, we would RFP these properties once, but the first step in doing this is to formally abandon them as public ways. Now, on Keelaw Court, this was a dead-end street with several properties on it. Several of these properties were, had homes that burned down in the distant past, and they began a number of lots. We subsequently sold two of the lots to the same abutter, who lives, who owns and sells properties on Thorn dyke Street. So he not, they, that Realty Trust now owns both sides of it. They've been maintaining the property, and in essence, what they have is a public way that comes into their property and that they've been maintaining for a number of years. The city for all, hasn't plowed the street for more than 20 years, hasn't picked up garbage on it, hasn't really done anything. For a number, for a while, when we first sold these properties, this was one of the largest dumping grounds in the city, because it was a large parcel of land hidden away from everybody, that cars could, trucks could drive down and just dump everything. So when the two people who were here today, who own the Realty Trust, they'd be more than willing to speak on this, but our intention is to, once we go through this process, we're gonna have this declared surplus and put this out as a disposition property.
Okay, let me see if I understood you correctly. You said that if you abandon a property, then the abutters can take possession.
Right.
Is that what I understood?
Right.
Okay. What is going to stop the abutter from taking possession before we sell it?
They could do, I assume they could do that. They'd have to go through the land court. I think it'd be pretty hard to do.
I'm sorry?
They'd have to go through the process of going to land court to clear title. I think that, I think what the city's trying to do is to work with them so that it's not gonna cost the city anything, and they're not gonna have to go through the, they'll be able to clear title through a proper deed.
But there is nothing, there's nothing to stop the abutters. Once we declare this property, abandoned property, there's nothing to stop the abutters from doing that, rather than paying for it.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
There's nothing stopping the abutters.
Yep.
From taking the property rather than paying for it. Why would they pay if they can take it in land court?
They could take the land, but nobody would ever recognize that they own it. Nobody would recognize that they own it because they don't have a document that shows ownership. They would have to go to land court, file a complaint in land court to clear title, and then they would have to come and make an evidentiary showing to the land court in Boston that the property's been abandoned for a number of years, that the city hasn't asserted any custody over it, that they've been, that it's been maintained. There's several steps that they have to do, and it takes time, money, expenses. If the city goes in and says, "Well, we're gonna formally abandon this by, under the chapter," and then it'll just become city land, not a public way, and we can transfer it, that, we felt that would probably be more economical, and the city would get some value out of it, and the abutters would actually save money and time, more importantly, time, than go into land court to clear title. So, you're correct to say, if the people would say, "You know what? The property's abandoned. I'm gonna say I own it. I'm gonna just start using it." But when they go to a bank, or they go to sell the property, the title examiner's gonna say, "You don't own that. Show me a document that shows you own that." You say it's abandoned, who else can prove that?
What would be the other option? Rather than declaring it abandoned, what would be the other option?
Land court.
Land court?
Land court in Boston to clear title.
Who would have to go to land court?
Whoever felt that they had a valid title to the property. And it's not, I wouldn't say it's an easy process.
I mean, right now, the property belongs to the city.
This is, there's a lot of properties that are in a similar situation, so, you know, like identified, but these two are in a circumstance where one is actively part of a piece of property that is a commercial property, and the other one has been in the hands of these gentlemen, and we've actually been working with them for more than seven years, trying to clear the title on this property.
Okay, once we declare this property is abandoned, are we gonna take the same step right after to declare a surplus property?
Excuse me?
Are we going to take the next step to declare this property surplus property?
For the other properties in the future?
Yeah. The same properties that we are going to declare abandoned.
Yes.
Are we going to take the second step and declare this property's surplus property?
If the circumstances are the same, yes. So this would be a...
So we're gonna be doing that?
This is a viable option to clear title to properties that are currently abandoned and not producing, that the city would have owned, that are either, that are either public streets or property, city property that is a public way.
What I'm concerned with is that we were abandoned the property and then not get anything back for it.
That would be what? That we're paying, being paid for it?
That we were abandoned the properties and not get anything for it.
And not getting anything for it? Well, that's not the circumstances in these two cases. And as I said, the process is very difficult, and the city has all the advantages, so if the city asserts it's right over the property, it's very easy to claim back.
No more questions.
Is there any further discussion? Counselor Reyes, since you were the author of the motion, can you please also amend it to take it off table matters, because it was considered to be also under table matters?
Ms. Inponge?
Yes.
Motion to take Document 294 out of table matter.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Okay, so the motion now, it's... The motion to approve has been made and properly second. Seeing there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 29515. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 295, 2015. Notice hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, March 15, 2016, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to abandon portion of, I'm sorry, concerning a proposed petition to abandon a portion of public roadway known as Chickering Street, presently owned by the city of Lawrence, subject to this petition to describe as land in Lawrence, Essex County, shown on Lot X on a plan, entitled plan of land in the city of Lawrence and Andover, Massachusetts, prepared by P&amp;L Realty Trust as dated April 30. A description of the property follows and is published. Said parcel to be abandoned contains approximately 6,999 square feet. Copy of the plan, other documents pertaining to proposed abandonment were available for public examination, viewing, in the Office of Community Development and the Office of City Clerk during business hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity. This matter was published in newsprint media on March 1 and March 8, as well as notice to abutters. This matter also, Counsel President, is among the table matters.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Can you please identify yourself? Name and address, please.
Yes, my name, my name is Attorney John Troy. I represent Sandy Sharland, who's the trustee of P&amp;L Realty Trust 2. Sandy is the owner of land on either side of that stretch of Chickering Street that we're concerned with, and I'm here tonight to answer questions from the board and give a little bit of background information as to how this request came about. Initially, the, I was recruited to look at the real estate, the title to the real estate involved for purposes of establishing and, in the understanding of the owner, what the status of that stretch of Chickering Street was. And in connection with that, I searched the records of the Essex North Registry of Deeds, the Essex South Registry of Deeds, the Essex County Commissioner's Office, their engineering office, as well as the records here in Lawrence City Hall with the town clerk, I'm sorry, city clerk, the city engineer's office, and I also consulted with the town of Andover, town clerk. And what I discovered is that Chickering Street is an ancient way, and its beginnings are very hazy. It appears to have emerged as a traveled way sometime in the 1700s, long before the establishment of Route 28, South Union Street, the B&amp;M Railroad, Route 114, any of those other roadways in the area and other means of travel. Sometime prior to 1800, it appears as though it came into common use, but its origins, and if it has origins as a public way, those are not a matter of record. None of the offices I communicated with or dealt with, including the county engineering office, city clerk, city engineer's office, Andover Town Clerk, nobody could provide any indication that this had ever been established as a public way, accepted by any municipality, laid out by the county, dedicated by any private party. Moreover, my research into the chains of title and of the abutting properties reflected a lack of certitude with respect to any sort of public interest in the property. Nonetheless, it appears on maps, and it runs between two parcels of land, shown on that, on the sketch, which I believe you have in your package, as Parcel X. You'll note that it terminates on one end at the Andover Town Line and at the other end at the Boston and Main Railroad. Extending, as it appears on the early maps of the city, it ran from the area of South Union Street to North Parish Road near the crossing at Route 114 near the stadium. A large portion of that stretch between Route 114 and South Union Street has been obscured, and in fact, it's been built over in large part just east of... and in fact, it's been built over in large part just east of the railroad. There's a large food warehouse there that is, completely covers the path of the old way. From the portion, the portion that concerns my client's property, from the Boston and Main Railroad back to South Union Street, it runs essentially as an undifferentiated piece of property between two parcels that they own. And what we're looking for is an abandonment by the city, discontinuing any public servitude associated, associated with that land. And moreover, we think that that's an appropriate resolution, because we can't find any evidence that it was ever, in fact, accepted or dedicated as a public way. In other words, we don't know if it has public, if there's a public right in that roadway, but we suspect that there may have been at one time. It may have arisen under prescription or some non-statutory method, and we're looking for the city to abandon that right at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional person wishes to speak? Okay, seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Next document is document 33-16. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 33-2016. Notice is hereby given to City Council, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, in Council chambers. At 7:00 p.m., the purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment, section 3.7A of Lawrence City Charter, by deleting the existing section and inserting in its place instead section that essentially would place the 30-day period for appointments to municipal offices with a 45-day period. The approval of the above homewill petition referenced herein is subject to the applicable provisions of Article 89 of Article 2 of the Amendments of the Constitution of the Commonwealth, Section 4.9, and any other lawful provisions governing the homewill petition. This will be a homewill petition to be forwarded for further approval upon approval of this council. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Name and address for the record, please.
Kathleen Ronge, 32 Dracot Street. I think you should vote against this, because as you can see with all of your public hearings, you cannot even wait 30 days to put a stop sign up, to put a handicap parking up. You always wait that 30 days. That 30 days is like a decade to you people. Now, you want to say 30 days isn't long, you know, you have, 30 days is plenty of time. If somebody's waiting for a job, how long have they been in this process? And, you know, essentially, they think they're getting hired, now you're going to wait them, make, make them wait another 45 days? And I have a question. What happens if the City Council shall hold, the committee shall hold a hearing, you know, not less than seven and not more than how many ever days after you get the name? Well, what happens if the City Council doesn't do that? That's what I'd like to know.
Sam, anyone else? Okay, seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor LaPlante.
So, as I'm looking at the amended changes, and I think it's important for the author to explain why it is that he believes there should be this change, so I'll ask that. I will also, if we're going to go forward from 30 days to 45 days, and I think I have a fundamental understanding as to why the author wants to do, but I think it's important that we, that we know for sure why that is. I think at some point, we want to also reevaluate the seven nor more than 21-day clause that's part of this proposal. So through you, Council President, could I hear from the author, the purpose for this charter change?
Councilor Maldonado?
Yes, in the past, we, this council had a substantial number of problems, to the point where many positions that were submitted by the mayor went by default, were appointed by default because the council or the subcommittee did not have enough time to approve these positions. So basically, the request to increase from 30 to 45 days is to make sure that no positions will be appointed by default, so that it would be rather, it would give the, the council and the subcommittee the, the power to do their job properly with a given amount of time.
Council President.
Council Vice President.
I would make a recommendation, and I agree with what the speaker or the author wants to do here. I also think in order to provide that kind of flexibility, that there should be an expansion of the seven nor more than 21 days, because hypothetically, Council President, should a personnel committee not meet and not provide to the full council some sort of report? And let's say they do it on day 22. Well, that in and of itself, again, violates this, and at that point, it's my understanding that whoever it is that the mayor is looking to, to confirm, automatically gets that department head position. So, I would encourage the, the author to, to consider expanding that. I don't know ideally, maybe you add seven more days to that. So you go to seven, not more than 28 days perhaps, add an extra week.
We can make it 30 days.
Or you could make it 30 days.
Yeah, yeah.
And it gives the council some flexibility, whether it's this mayor or any mayor, any, this council or any council. It needs to have the ability to, to stand the test of time.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense to me.
Okay.
So, so I would, I would make the motion that, what's the article number?
33.
33?
33/16 is the number to Council President. This is the, 33-16 is the number.
Okay. Then I make the motion that, that we expand from the seven to 21 days to seven to 30 days.
Okay. Councilors, are there any further discussion? Seeing there's none?
Just, just to be clear, those two provisions, expanding it to 45 days and seven to 30 days?
Yes.
And just so I'm clear, that's really the only reason for this proposal, is to go from 30 days to 45 days?
Exactly. Exactly.
Councilors, any further discussion? Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes. Just going through the procedure, which I'm, I'm new in the council, but I would like to know more about it. So basically, when we are at the full council, we send everything to subcommittees. It takes seven days, at least seven days to, to go to the, to go to the subcommittee. And then it go back to the, to the full council in another seven day.
No, and the council will have a total of 45 days.
No, 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 I'm saying the process. And the, and the way that it is right now, we send everything here to the subcommittees. It take, let's say perhaps one week for the subcommittee to meet up, and then once we work at the subcommittee level, then either recommend it or send it with other recommendations to the full council, it come back here, the next full council meeting.
That's correct.
Which is basically 15 days. And a 15-day period, we can see it again here at the full council.
Yeah.
So what was the, the issue before, because why, why we were going for more than 30 days?
The issue, the issue before was that if the subcommittee was not able to meet on a timely basis, too much time went by, and then by the time the committee, the subcommittee acted, the, the 30 days had, had already gone by. Okay, as a matter of fact, there were, there were times when the subcommittee took action in tabling or removing the item without prejudice, and that, that did not work. That was not appropriate. So, so rather than taking steps like that, it is better to give the subcommittee enough time to make a decision and have enough time to bring it to the full council, so the full council can vote on it before it becomes, before the position becomes effective by default.
So basically, we are changing something because the subcommittee couldn't meet?
Correct.
Yes.
And why the subcommittee couldn't meet?
For one reason or the other, they didn't have a quorum.
Because, I mean, uh.
There could be, there could be many reasons why the subcommittee couldn't meet in, in the.
Worrying issue is one thing that is understandable, but I mean, a scheduled subcommittee meeting should be, should be there all the time, I think.
Oh, the, the subcommittee needs to meet all the time, but there could be many reasons. There could be a snowstorm, there could be sick members of the subcommittee that, that could be in the hospital. And in our situation, there was a situation where the members of the, of the, of the subcommittee resigned from the council, and there was, there was not enough quorum, and we took steps to, to have the, the president of the council be able to serve as a, as a, as an official member of the committee in order to, to make a quorum. So there could be many reasons why the subcommittee couldn't, couldn't meet.
Well, I, I understand that, I mean, I just, I, I think that 30 days is enough, and that's why you're going to vote against it. But I mean, I understand your point, and you have a valid point, but still, I think that we should have a committee that, a council that actually, it's, it's being held responsible for our options.
Of course. That's the ideal.
And we should meet all the time. That's, that's all I, I need to say. But I respect your, your proposal.
Okay. Councilor, seeing there's no further discussion on this item, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Reyes?
No.
Councilor DePena?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
No.
Councilor Abdu?
No.
Councilor Monte?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez noted. Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
And Council President?
No. What's the count?
Four, four.
Motion fails?
Fails.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is document 49-16. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 49-2016. Notice is hereby given to City Council, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, in City Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City Lawrence to be further amended concerning handicap parking to be inserted in proper order. Amelie Street, north side to a point 115 feet, eastwardly of the intersection of Frost Drive to a point 135 feet of the intersection, eastwardly of the intersection of Frost Drive. To the extent there exist any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed. Persons wishing to be, be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is document 59-16. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 59-2016. Notice is hereby given to City Council, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, in City Council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to revise ordinances for the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding a new paragraph to the municipal code concerning handicap parking to be inserted in proper order. Juniper Street, west side to a point 152 feet southerly of the intersection of Basswood Street to a point 172 feet southerly of the intersection of Basswood Street. To the extent there exist other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only, and persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March 8th.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it.
Council President?
Mr. Vice President?
May I take document number 56/16 off of table matters?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 56-16. Dedication corner of 342 South Union Street and Cambridge Street. Private First Class Thomas A. Sullivan. He was based on the agenda by Council Vice President LaPlante and Councilor Abdu. Councilors?
So, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Council Vice President LaPlante.
So, Council President, the reason why this is on the agenda is because many years ago, an individual was called to combat in World War II. We have a lot of individuals who have been called to do a lot of great and brave things who have been born and bred in our city and that have served our country, and this individual is another example of someone who responded to his nation's call and was involved in World War II. The individual was private first class Thomas A. Sullivan. You all have received a little background information regarding his involvement in that war. I'm not going to go through all the details, I'm sure maybe a subsequent speaker or the family themselves may wish to speak on that a little bit more. But what I wanted to highlight was the call of duty, the responsiveness at a very young age. And then when his duty was completed, when he finished serving our country in wartime and in combat, he came back to our city, raised a family, and became one of the pillars, his family became one of the pillars of our city. That family, the Sullivan family, gave an awful lot. He gave his, he gave part of his life, he did not die in combat, but he gave part of his life serving our country there. And then when he raised his family, they had a number of individuals who were involved, like I said, in the fabric of our city. One was Kevin Sullivan, who was a former mayor and the Secretary of Administration and Finance for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He was, if I recall correctly, one of the last aldermen that served here before we did a transition to the mayoral city of government back in 1983. And these charter things that we just had a chance to talk about, he was on the front lines of that back in 83, when he was an alderman and then became, became mayor. Not only did he become mayor, but that family through private first class Thomas, Thomas A. Sullivan also had perhaps another mayor, and a former colleague of mine, Mike Sullivan, who has served with me on the City Council, sat where Mr. Abdu sits today, and I served for two years, and then he became mayor of our city. There are also another brother, Mark, and I don't know if there's anyone else in that family I'm looking for?
Tom.
Tom, thank you.
Philip.
That's right. Tom Sullivan, also very involved in, in real estate and other activities in our city. But I just wanted to highlight that, that we're going to have, if this is passed tonight, Council President, we are going to have a marker at the location where that family, when they grew up, where this family grew up, where they lived, and where one of their offices was, one of their founding offices was right there on, on South Union Street. And so, I wholeheartedly in, in support this proposal, and I'm glad that we as a city can thank and celebrate the actions not only of this family, but also of this fine man who I unfortunately never had a chance to meet. I would have loved to have had a, had a chance to meet Mr. Sullivan and talk to him a little bit about what it would have been like to be a Lorenson back in the day, and what kind of changes he may have seen for us, that he's good and the bad. But I hope that we can all support this proposal tonight.
Any further discussion? Councilor DeBabdo?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too would like to add my support to this item as a co-sponsor. I've had the privilege to. item as, as a co-sponsor. Um, I've had the, uh, privilege to work with Mayor Michael Sullivan, I was on the council when he was mayor, and worked for Secretary Sullivan when he was the Secretary of Transportation. Um, it's through my exposure, I'm not going to, um, you know, go over ground that Counsel La Plan so well covered as far as, um, PFC Thomas Sullivan, but, you know, he gave his, he gave a period of his life for his country, came back to Lawrence as Mark so well put, and he passed at a very early age of forty-eight, I believe his age was. And, um, I think the one part we wanna cover here is, this is a great opportunity to recognize a man, but also recognize a family, as, as Mark put, as Counsel La Plan put it. And, um, his wife Anna, um, is not with us this evening, but I know, uh, when a day comes when this dedication could occur, that she'll be, uh, very proud. Um, she's obviously had the privilege of seeing both of her sons do very well, as well as Tom and Mark, and, um, but this will be, I think, a great, uh, capstone on a family story right here from Lawrence. Um, a gentleman that went off to war at a very young age, um, established a, a, a family that has given a lot to the city, um, established a very successful, uh, business in the city, and, um, you know, is a living, he has a living memory with us this evening and his two sons, and, um, I just, uh, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to Counsel La Plan for bringing this to the forefront, and I add my support and ask that my colleagues support this item.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none. Mayor Sullivan?
Good evening, Mayor. Kevin Sullivan, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'll be brief, I know you've got a, a large agenda today, and thank you, Counsel La Plan, and certainly, uh, Counselor Abdu, and I wanna thank the ordinance committee, uh, last month for unanimously recommending this to the full body. Uh, my father grew up on South Union, Cambridge Street, where we, we would like to have that little corner sort of named in his honor. He was drafted in, in nineteen forty-four, he was only twenty-one years old, and he was sent to Italy, which, uh, was a month before D-Day, actually. So, the, uh, the Allies knew that they were going to invade, uh, Europe via France. Uh, but, of course, the hundreds of thousands of soldiers they sent to Italy did not know that. Uh, and Hitler was, was bound to keep, uh, Italy under his control, and he ordered his soldiers not to give up an inch of ground. So, for twenty months, uh, there were fifty thousand killed in Italy alone, and three hundred twenty thousand wounded. Uh, my father was one of them. He came in May of nineteen forty-four, was wounded in September of, um, nineteen forty-four. Uh, and he, he never really regained, uh, hearing in one of his ears, and was ordered, was given the Purple Heart, and, uh, served into the liberation of Italy, uh, all the way till May nineteen forty-five, where he was discharged and came back to the States. And as Counsel La Plant mentioned, uh, married my mother a few years later. Uh, we always grew up on South Union Street, that's where he grew up as a boy. Uh, broke some windows at the British Club every now and then.
[laughing]
But it was, uh, it was fitting, and my mother's just turned ninety-one, and, you know, sometimes you think, are we doing enough both for our parents? And, and the fact is that, Counselor Abdu, a veteran, um, the veterans Lawrence has always answered the call. For every war or skirmish, uh, we've sent veterans, uh, into harm's way, and they've always answered the call. So, this tribute tonight for my father, and I'll let Mike speak, uh, quickly, um, is really on behalf of all the veterans, and I really applaud the City Council, uh, for recognizing veterans. And I mentioned at the last meeting that, uh, you know, I had served almost eight years, actually ten years, in, in, on the city level. And I wish I had thought of that idea, uh, of naming different corners, uh, with the regularity that you do, and I think that's a really nice, nice gesture, and, and you should be very proud of that. So, I'll have my brother Mike say a few words, and then we'll let you get on. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President, and Counsel La Plan, Abdu, and the rest of the wonderful Lawrence City Council, and it's, I think Kevin did a great job at summing up my dad's, um, service in Italy. But I just wanna, again, thank you as a city, uh, your Veterans Services Director, uh, Jamie Melendez, uh, Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Francisco Urina, who's been a lot of help gathering information about our dad. A lot of the World War Two veterans came back from that, uh, time overseas in Europe and never really talked about it. And, uh, Counselor, uh, La Plan said that my dad was only forty-seven when he passed away in nineteen seventy, and actually it would be about forty-six years later now. Um, if he was still alive, he'd be ninety-three years old, and my mom's ninety-one, and she's in great health, and she loves Lawrence. Uh, we still maintain the two-family home on the corner of South Union and Cambridge Street, it's nice housing for families now. Um, but I wanna just also thank you and, and, and just bring up a fact, about ten years ago, when we were renovating, I know you're talking about the capital improvement plan now that's gonna be rolling out, but one of, I think, the, uh, the largest renovations was Veteran Stadium. And I remember coming down here, thinking we were just renovating a sports arena, and after many, many hours of discussion with the City Council, a lot of you were there, a lot of you weren't on the council at the time, but you were, you were involved. Um, you all thought it was so important for it to honor the veterans, and I think when people drive by Veterans Memorial Stadium, uh, they certainly know that Lawrence, uh, what they think of their veterans. Um, and so I wanna thank all of you, and we're looking forward to a wonderful celebration sometime, maybe in April or May, and, um, my mom would be honored, and we're deeply honored as a family, and my dad would be too. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Counselors, there's a motion on the, any further discussion? Seeing there's none,
there's a motion on the floor. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor President?
Counselor Reyes?
Yes, can we take two item out of order before you go to the next item?
Sure.
The next document?
Sure, which documents?
Is sixty-two and sixty-three dash sixteen, that's coming from committee report.
Okay, there's a motion to take document sixty-two sixteen and sixty-three sixteen out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
And properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, Counselor Reyes, document sixty-two sixteen and sixty-three sixteen, Paul Brokens license at ninety-two Broadway, and second-hand and old gold dealer license at ninety-two Broadway. Both placed on the agenda by Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, both document came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
So, motion has been made to pro, to approve and properly second. Uh, is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Going back to the top of the agenda, document sixty sixteen, Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document sixty, two thousand sixteen notices hereby giving the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March fifteen, two thousand sixteen, in Council chambers at seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning, uh, the consideration for the authorization of the Lawrence City Council upon a proposed loan order entitled, "An Order Authorizing a Sewer System Evaluation Survey, Sewer System and Drainage Improvement Planning. Sewer System Improvements and Drainage Improvements, Including the Payment of Class Incidental and Related There Too." Said order is described in full in said publication, in the amount of nineteen million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Persons wishing, wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on March eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Any man address for the record, please?
Hello, City Council, my name is Francis Selec. As you can see, this is nineteen million and money. How long will it take, that's what I, my question, how long will it take for all this work to be done? Can you ask that question? Thank you.
Will do.
Very important, how long?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve, uh, with discussion.
Motion?
Second for discussion.
Motion has been made and properly second for discussion. Counselor, uh, Maldonado?
Yes, uh, it's, uh, Brian. How are you, Brian?
Good evening.
Uh, Brian, how much money do we have in the free cash for the water department?
Uh, right now, it's about twelve million.
Twelve million dollars?
Just about. We'll, we'll go through the exact figures in the presentation.
I'm sorry?
We'll go through the exact figures in the presentation.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there is a presentation prepared for us.
Okay. Um, then, let me wait on to after the presentation, and then I can, I will ask some other questions then.
Sure, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Counselor Monte, do you have any specific questions, or will you prefer to wait?
Presentation.
Okay.
All right, so in the interest of time, we'll just start with the presentation?
Yep.
Okay.
Right ahead.
There we go. Good evening, counselors. Um, my name is Jim Ravad, and I'm with, um, the engineering firm Woodland and Curran, and, um, we have a, I think, brief presentation, um, to go over the reasons for this, uh, loan authorization, the benefits of the city, and, um, counselors, you were just asking, the financial impacts, um, to the city. So, the, um, we, the, the goals of this project is to minimize flooding, um, in the city and reduce what we call SSOs, which are sewer system overflows. The Lawrence sewer system is about sixty percent combined, which means that the, um, stormwater, rainwater, and the sewage are, uh, flow in the same pipes that eventually go to the Great Lawrence Sanitary District's wastewater treatment plant. And when it rains, the, uh, the sewer lines cannot, cannot handle all the flow. So, as a result, you gets, you get some sewer system overflows, which we, we have, um, have a, a couple of photographs of them. And this is a combination of rainwater and actually, unfortunately, sewage that backs up into the, um, and sometimes into people's homes and, and into the streets of Lawrence. The, so the, the goals of this project is to obviously maintain public health, uh, want to improve the operation of the system. Uh, these, the sewer system in Lawrence has been, I'd say neglected over the years, and, um, really needs a, a lot of improvements. And because the system has been neglected, uh, the city had to enter into a consent decree with the, uh, with EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, to inspect the system and to make some improvements to the, to the sewage collection system. And that's what this funding is for, is for tonight. The, that's off a little bit, sorry. Um, since, uh, two thousand and fourteen, there have been twenty-two reportable sewer system overflows throughout the city, and we've estimated that that's resulted in about fourteen thousand gallons of, of, of sewage that ended up in the streets of the city when, when you had heavy rains. Uh, so the, uh, that, we found, we've been tracking those, and once there is a sewer system overflow, we've been inspecting the sewer lines and have been able to eliminate a lot of the backups that are in the sewers, so that they won't happen, uh, they won't happen again at these locations. I'm sorry, this little, uh, just, just to summarize, the, the city of Lawrence has a hundred and thirty miles of sewer mains under the streets, uh, twenty-nine hundred manholes in the sewer system, and sixty percent of the city is combined. And again, that means that, um, the stormwater, when it rains, and the sewage flow in the same, in the same pipes. That's very common in older cities, um, you know, back when these systems were built, there was no treatment, and all the flow just went to the Marimac River. So, um, commons, it's very, it was very common, Lawrence, Lowell, Haverhill, um, the big cities along the Marimac River, Nashville, Concord, Manchester, all have the same issues that they're, they're actually dealing with right now. Um, to date, we have been, the, the City Council has approved previous funding to evaluate the sewer system, and to date, we've inspected twenty-five miles of the sewer system, uh, just over a thousand manholes, and have identified a number of, um, what we call stormwater outfalls, and these are pipes that go directly to the, to the Marimac, uh, River, or the, uh, the Shawshank River. And, uh, some of those contain some sewage in it. Uh, fortunately, most of them don't, and that's, they're not supposed to have any sewage in them. So, we're inspecting those systems and trying to identify where there are actually improper, uh, illegal connections into those, into those, um, outfalls, uh, so that we can get that sewage out of the, um, out of the water bodies. The, um, we have a project, um, that is about to start to improve the sewer system, and that's gonna include nine thousand feet, where we're gonna, we're actually gonna line the, the sewer. The sewers, um, nine hundred feet are gonna be what we call open cut, we're gonna have to dig the sewer main up and actually repair it, and I have some photographs of some of the problems that we've found. Uh, two hundred manholes are gonna be rehabilitated, there actually, um, flow is leaking out of the, out of the manholes, so we need to seal those up, so the flow doesn't escape the manholes. And we've found a lot of tree roots in the, in the lines, which causes backups and causes some of these overflows. So, we're gonna be treating about three thousand feet of the, of the sewer lines to eliminate the roots, kill the roots, and eliminate them from growing back into the, into the, uh, into sewer lines. And then in, uh, starting in September, there will be a, a larger project, it's gonna be about eight thousand feet of, uh, sewer line replacement on all the streets that you see there. Uh, we found problems with the line, broken pipes, um, and so, the only way to fix those is to, uh, dig the, the sewer lines up and actually repair them. So, that project is gonna start, uh, in September, and it'll last for about a year. These are some pictures, uh, these are only a few of the many problems that we've found in the, in the, um, the sewer system. Upper left is a, is a broken pipe. Um, lower left, you can see the pipe is deformed and actually broken. Um, to, on the, the lower right, the, the, um, pipe joint has opened, it's deflected, you, you can see, uh, just above the pipe, that's actually just, uh, earth. So, if that is not, if that's not repaired, all that soil will eventually get into the pipe, be washed away, you'll have a sinkhole in the, in this, in the city, in, in the streets. Um, and that's actually occurred in, on a few occasions already. So, we wanna correct these before it becomes a major problem. In the upper right-hand corner is, um, a root ball that we found in, um, in a line on Beacon Street. Uh, that's unfortunately fairly common, we found a lot of that. Uh, relatively easy to fix, you can just cut the roots out. Um, but then we wanna line the pipe so, and treat the pipe, so that the roots don't grow back again. But as you can see, that would block the flow of the pipe, so when you get a heavy rain, it blocks the flow, and that's what causes some of the backups into the streets. So, we've made a lot of progress re, repairing, making a lot of those type of repairs already, and that, um, uh, the funding for that, for the funding would, would be able to continue to, to make these repairs. This is some photographs looking down inside, um, uh, some manholes in, that you can get access to the, the sewer mains in the, in the upper left. Um, you're not, you shouldn't have any water at all in these manholes, so there's, there's a blockage someplace that's causing that water to just have standing water, um, in the manhole. The lower left, you can see there's a pipe going through the manhole, and there's a lot of paper debris sitting on top of the pipe. That tells us that that manhole has surcharged. Again, there's a backup, um, that's caused the water to rise in the manhole, and if it comes up too high, it'll actually flow into the street. So, every time we find a problem like this, uh, then we investigate it, send a, turn the camera down the line... down the line and then clean it. Hopefully, we can just clean the line out. Sometimes we have to make these repairs that we're planning on doing. The upper right-hand corner is grease that is that's that's in a in one of the manholes. And that's a major problem when when grease gets enters into the sewer system. It really hardens. It doesn't stay doesn't stay liquid. It it's almost as hard as concrete. It takes a lot just to get it out. So all these things that we're finding through these the existing inspections we've done, and again, this funding is to continue with these inspections and actually make the repairs to the to the sewer lines. So the the funding is is for just under twenty million dollars. It is it will be the second phase of the sewer system evaluation, going in, looking at the problems, sending a camera down the line, finding out where the problems are. And then the second phase of the project, which is actually to do the improvements, would be to make the repairs when we find problems in the in the sewer line. And the total amount that that for this phase of the project is about is twenty million dollars, and you will not have to raise your the sewer rates to pay for that. So I'll talk a little more about that. I think we've got a summary of some financial information on the next slide. The current water and sewer rates were last increased in two thousand and nine. The average in Massachusetts, the average water and sewer annual bill is five hundred and thirty-two dollars for water, seven hundred and fifty-six for sewer. In Lawrence, those same annual averages are two hundred and four and two twenty. Then I also looked at the, I'd say, comparable communities Lowell, Haverhill, Springfield, Worcester, communities that are pretty much similar to Lawrence in size. And their rates, Lawrence is 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 lower than the average of those those communities too. So the average of the I'd say the industrials, older industrial cities in Massachusetts is two fifty-two for for water and two seventy-six for sewer. Again, Lawrence is doing very well financially with their water and sewer rates, have done a lot of work to keep those rates down, and have been able to fund quite a bit of projects. If this twenty million dollars is approved, it'll be a total of eighty million dollars of loan authorizations to improve the water and sewer system, which is just it's just unheard of. I don't know of any other community that's that's able to fund that kind of work, nothing really even close to that. And that was all accomplished with the the water department, sewer department, go to the just really and we helped them, Woodland and Curran helped them to really optimize operations at the water treatment plant. We changed some of the chemicals. We joined a regional chemical consortium to get better prices, changed the operation of a plant to reduce the amount of flow going to the Great Lawrence Sanitary District, which the city has to pay for. And we were able to convince, when we took over the operation of the plant, Woodland and Curran operates the water treatment plant, we convinced DEP that we didn't need as many staff as they were recommending to operate the plant. So that was a tremendous savings for the for the city. Also, if you've been to the plant, you've seen the solar panels at the water treatment plant. That saves about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. We've replaced some large pumps at the water treatment plant to save about ninety thousand dollars a year. And I think definitely the biggest revenue, well, this is a revenue generator for the city, is replacing all of the old inaccurate water meters. So they're all automated now. They're all read by radios. So their bills are very, very accurate, and the meters are very accurate too. So everybody in the city, pretty much everybody now, all the businesses, all the residents have new meters, and everybody is paying really what they should be paying. And that was not the case in the past. The meters were very old, very inaccurate. If you had a new a newer meter in your home, you were paying more than somebody else who had an older meter. And now all the meters are all brand new in the in the entire city. So, Councilor, you were asking a question about the the reserves. Right now, the this is a a graph of the reserves, basically money in the basically money in the bank for the Water and the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And this is the reason why you do not have to raise rates right now to pay for this project. As you can see, the right now, the the reserves are over fifteen million dollars. And they do start to go down as not only this project, we we've factored in the the impact of paying back this project, which will probably start to hit in two thousand and eighteen, maybe. But it also is dropping because you're you're going to be paying for other projects that have already been approved. So the you're only you're really not going to have to raise rates until two thousand and twenty, possibly. But actually, each year where when we we look at this every single year, each year that date is being pushed out because of the now that we're getting we're getting accurate numbers of all the revenue from the water meters, the city is doing a much better job at collecting bills that they were having problems with before. And all of that is adding to the reserves that that basically is going to allow you to do this work without raising rates for for quite a while. That's the presentation. Anyone have any questions? I'm sure there will be. Go back to that.
Councilor Monte had the floor.
I'll yield for wait my questions to the end.
Councilor Maldonado?
Yeah, let me. My first question was, what was the amount of free cash? Mr. Peña indicated twelve million, but you are indicating there that is fifteen?
It looks like it's it's.
It's.
Yeah.
Sorry, I spoke earlier. It's actually fourteen point two.
Fourteen point two?
Fourteen point two. We closed the year at fifteen point eight.
So that information that is there is not accurate?
It is accurate. So what happened was the the information that's shown in the presentation is at the closing, at the certification of the free cash or retain earnings in our case. It was fifteen point eight. As you recall, just a few weeks ago, the council approved the transfer of one point six million to take on a number of projects. So now we're down to fourteen point two.
Fourteen point two.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that is factored into the slides that we have?
Yes.
The fifteen, then it dropped.
Yes, okay. Okay. How much money does the water department owes in loans so far? What is the total amount of loans that we have?
That is a good question. I do not have the answer off the top of my head. But what we pay on an annualized basis is in excess of four million dollars a year. So in terms of how much is owed on each of the on each of the loans, I don't know. I know that we borrowed sixty in the last three years. You know, we'll be we'll be, you know, we're asking for authorization for borrowing another twenty. I would think that we would be close to a hundred million dollar mark, but I do not know the exact answer at this moment.
Okay, but you're estimating approximately a hundred million dollars?
Roughly.
That we owe right now?
If this gets approved, correct.
Okay. Based on the current rate, water rate right now, what is the maximum amount of money that we can borrow?
This is so this is why we do this on an annualized basis. As it seems right now, this would be the limit of what we can borrow, as we've shown here, without a rate increase through two thousand and nineteen, essentially, which is our which is our goal.
So the nineteen million would be the maximum we it will it will get us to the max of money that we can borrow based on the current water rate?
Based on current projections, yes. This will be this will be the max we can borrow. But again, as as Jim pointed out, every year we look at it, and it pushes based on our based on our savings, just the efficiencies in our operations year after year. You know, most recently with the new administration, there was a spending freeze instituted during the last quarter of every period. So we're able to save, you know, even more money that way. At the end of the day, we're showing, you know, excesses or, yeah, fiscal excess of, you know, about two million dollars every year. So based on that, we'd have to we'd have to evaluate it on an annual basis. We'll have to look at it at the end of every year and see what what we're able to save that year.
Okay. Based on your presentation, you indicated that borrowing the nineteen million, nineteen point nine, would now require an increase in water rate. Am I correct?
Correct. It will not require a rate increase, you know, within the next few fiscal years in order to pay it back.
Until two thousand and twenty.
Twenty twenty twenty, actually fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one is when we deplete the reserves, as is shown in the graph there. But conservatively, what we'd like to do in order to avoid rate shock to the residents having to increase, you know, their water rates twenty percent, is we'd like to get a head start on that. So we'd increase it gradually over over the next few years. And the milestone that we've always talked about is two thousand and nineteen, which would give the the residents a ten-year period of no water rate increase, which, in my own experience, that's practically unheard of, to go ten years without a rate increase.
How did you estimate that by two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty, we are going to deplete the surplus money that we have when we don't use them? We barely use them.
Yeah, so so the so based on not just this loan authorization, but the previous loan authorizations, the the plan with the reserves is rather than use it on one-time projects to leverage that to pay back the loan. So beginning fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and as you'll see in the budget that'll be presented later this spring, the plan is to balance the budget using transfers from the from the retained earnings. So essentially, use that use those retained earnings to pay back the loans. Rather so rather than do twenty million dollars worth of work one year and deplete, you know, twenty million dollars in the reserves, we can do it, we can borrow it, and then pay it back over twenty years, borrowing, you know, transferring, say, a million dollars or two million dollars from the retained earnings every year.
Is the depletion estimate based on not borrowing any more money? Or is it or are you projecting that you're going to come in front of this council to borrow more money?
It that's really going to depend on, I would say, at this point, what we find in the pipes and what the EPA requires us to do. Based on the current consent decree, it's imperative that we borrow these this, you know, this nineteen point nine million dollars in order to address those issues that we are that we are legally obligated to require under the consent to to address under the consent decree. So if the EPA or the DEP comes back with, you know, within the next few years and requires us to do more work that we simply do not have the budget for, it would require an additional loan authorization.
Okay. Right now, how much money have we used from the surplus money to pay back loans or to pay the interest on the on loans?
Right now, we are not using any.
We're not using anything?
No, right now, we are not.
Okay. One more question.
Okay. Councilor Monte?
Thank you. Do we have a projected time by areas as to when these projects are going to start moving forward? And only because we just did over Avon Street, and Avon Street has been dug out again. Jackson Street, same same deal here. And they have not been repaired to par or at all. I mean, instead of having it repaired, now we have little waterways through there. How is that going to function? How is that so that we're not continuing to open our streets after we have already used money to pave them? And have we contacted companies that have underground systems here in our city so that everything could be scheduled so that in a timely matter when those are open, they can go in there and repair if they need to repair, or they can go do what they need to do, so that we don't have a projected street that's going to be repaired by us? And then come come that winter and come spring again of the following year, we're reopening it because there is some utility company that needs to get in, or there's X Y C happening? Because we did spend a lot of money in that whole area over there, Jackson Street and Avon Street, and right now it's garbage. And it didn't even have that didn't even happen for we didn't even have good streets for a year. And these streets were streets that were it took six to eight months for them to be repaired. And on top of that, there were years and years and years and years before they had been repaired. So are we doing ourselves a disservice by, you know, or what is our projected plan in that part of the situation?
All right, I can I can address all of those issues.
Thank you.
So a couple of things. When when Jackson Street and those areas were repaved, they were they they were not done there was not a full overlay done, rather the material was recycled to do it. We had always planned on replacing water main on Jackson Street or Avon Street because they're historically some of the worst fire flows in the city. And I don't want to drag on, but, you know, if you recall, on on Hancock Street, there was a fire that that burned down two homes in the area. And firefighters got there, and there was just not enough water. The whole thing, you know, caught on flames, they had to demolish the building. And those are situations when when you when you, you know, look at the maps and look at the look at the hydraulic model and say, we should have we should have predicted that. We should have been on top of that. Well, Jackson Street was one of those is one of those areas where rather than wait for something to happen, because we knew that if something were if if there were buildings that would catch on fire, multiple buildings would go up in flames. And that the firefighters, regardless of their of their, you know, quick response, would not have the necessary tools, meaning the water, the flow and the adequate pressure to to fight those fires. So we addressed those. So we knew they had to be done. In terms of the the road repaving, we are actually repaving that within the next in the next month or two. So that whole thing will be milled and overlaid. It's going to be better than it was before.
Because I that that did happen. Sergeant Street, we had a home on Sergeant Street, a couple of homes. They didn't have the water pressure up there, and this happened about a month and a half ago. The fire station, you wouldn't need a fire truck to to get to the house because it was two houses away, literally, two houses away from the fire station. And they could not they couldn't get water up there. It was it was ridiculous. So I understand that. So that that was my reason as to how are we going to target this? Are we going to target it so that we get some water pressure up into the hills before we do anything in the valley area? Or how is that projected? Have you guys thought out a plan for that to be have had? And are we putting it up anywhere so that people know what streets to avoid, et cetera? Because sometimes they're so far into the street until they see the detour sign, there's nowhere to turn around, there's machinery, dirt, everything else in the way. You have people who are upset. You've got cab drivers who are so friendly in our city that are already upset at times. You've got school buses that can't do the whole loop around. So it it creates a little bit of a chaos in some of in some of our areas. And we all know that our streets are very narrow in in some other places also. So it becomes a more of a problem than us trying to fix something in a situation where it's been being had in the city.
So it seems what you're what you're getting is coordination issues on two parts. Number one, we are coordinating with Columbia Gas, which is the largest underground utility owner in the city, other than the city of Lawrence. So none of the streets that we resurface will not have been touched by Columbia Gas first. We are letting them know way ahead of time what our plans are. We're giving them maps of where we're going to be. We're asking them to go in, repair. If you look at Knox Street right now, Knox Street and Berkeley Street, the gas companies working there, we plan on replacing water main later this year. And that's why we've given them we've given them those maps that get in, replace all of your gas main that you need to do, that you foresee doing in the next five, ten years. Because once we replace the water main, once we address the sewer issues, that's another thing, we're we're looking at water and sewer on the same streets. So we're cameraing the lines, as Jim mentioned, we're cameraing the sewer lines, looking at any defects that we anticipate having to having the need to dig in the next ten years. And if there's a need to dig, maybe it's not that bad, maybe it could maybe, you know, maybe it'll get bad in five years. Well, now, let's let's go and address it now. Because once we pave those roads, we're not opening those roads again.
That's the other question I was going to ask. Are we let are we letting them know, like, you know, if if you guys don't act on this, unless there's an imminent danger, emergency, we're not going to allow you to open up the street?
Absolutely.
That's typically what you get.
Is that something along those lines?
Very typical.
And and thank you for showing that on Leroy about how the piping is like was off. Because I had been talking to Brian about situations that we had down there. And what happens with that is that the the sewage starts to erode and eats away at at the dirt itself and all that good stuff. What it did was it ate away some of the gas piping that we had down there. And the gas smell that was down there was it was horrible. So then that affects other other areas, especially with the situation that happened in Midtown, where they their community grew, they did what they had and it's on their side. We didn't, you know, conjoinately do what we needed to do, I guess, as a as a unit. And now we're paying the consequences down in that end, so.
That photograph, if you remember, with the with the pipes, not.
Commissioner Peña?
Not fitting correctly, not meeting.
Can you speak to the mic, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Again, if, you know, there's there's definitely other other similar situations throughout the city. And we could repair a water main in a street, and that could happen. And, you know, you have to go back and repair that. You really just have to. Because you'll develop a sinkhole in the street. So by doing these inspections now, we can find them and then plan to do these repairs, you know, together, both the water and the sewer. So.
And then the other thing to the rootage, the roots going into the septic systems and stuff like that, we really need to see. And I had spoken to whenever they come up here, and they talk about these new projects that they want to do, X Y Z, like, spend a little more money on a tree that's not going to go into our systems and and, you know, eat away at our, you know, because just by trying to beautify what's on top, we're destroying all the all the beautiful, all this all the structural work that has to do with our city. And if we're going to go into the structure part of it and repair it, we need to be a little more mindful of what we're doing on the top that can affect the bottom part. So rootage and stuff like that is a is a huge problem. Over on Willow Street, we had a huge problem over there where that happened. And that's one of the the areas that I know that we're getting money for. But along those lines, are we trying to get any help for the homeowners that have these proj- these problems? Because I know of a situation down on Willow Street, the homeowner didn't have any relief. They say something from a certain, uh, feet out from their property underneath the sidewalk, belongs to them, doesn't belong to them. They had to come out of pocket six grand. Somebody over seventy years old didn't have the money. So are we doing anything to help in the sense of, um, if we send a camera down there and we've, we see that there's a blockage? Are we working with homeowners to, um, be able to alleviate the situation? Because what if they can't afford it? But we say, okay, we can't pay for it as a city, or we have nothing to alleviate your situation, well, we're gonna fix it from here to there. But then that's gonna create a huge, a bigger problem. So by that not being fixed on the homeowner's side of, of the situation can bring a huge, a bigger problem for the city. Are we doing anything to alleviate those situations?
Yeah, so, so you brought up a good point. So, so unfortunately, tho, those pipes are the property of the property owner. And they, they may sometimes be covered by homeowners insurance, sometimes they're not. Uh, but, what we are doing, the only thing we can do, because again, we, we can't use our funds, these are public funds that are raised through, through water and sewer vendors, we can't use public funds on private issues. We cannot, because that pipe is not owned by the city, we can't, we can't repair it. That, you know, that's, that's just not fair to our ratepayers because we're subsidizing it for, for repairs. What we can do, uh, and we've actually gained the, the authorization of the mayor and the finance director, is we could enter into payment plans with the, uh, with the homeowners. So the, the water and sewer department can perform the work, if it is within our, within our wheelhouse of capabilities. You know, sometimes, you know, if we have the equipment, we have the personnel, we have the experience to, to do the job, we will perform the job and we will, and we will, um, enter into payment plans with the homeowners. That's as much as.
The EPA doesn't have any programs or funding, like say for someone who won't be able to afford that? If it's somebody under social security? If it's somebody who can't afford to pay for the repair of, of this line, um, that's an unforeseen problem? Because it's something, it's not something that they could see, but have supervision to see what's going on underneath their home, groundage, plumbing, et cetera. So I, I, are there any grants? There's no funding, there's no type of help? Do they offer anything?
There, there is no type of help that's available to, to municipalities to help homeowners with that sort of issue.
That's crazy. That we wouldn't have anything federally or statewide, they would help. I mean, cause locally, obviously, I know that as a city, we wouldn't be able to do it. But if, if, if it's a repair coming into this home and we're able to fix it to here, and this person doesn't have the ability to pay for it, are we just gonna let that be and then have that create a bigger problem?
Yep, no, I, I understand. And again, we, we, you know, we would work with them, again, in terms of offering, you know, the, the, uh, the financing or the, or the payment plans. But unfortunately, there are no, no grants for that. In fact, there are no, there are no, there, there are very, very limited grants for municipalities as a whole. Uh, and we, and we, and trust me, we apply, we, we take advantage of every grant that's available. In fact, we just applied for a grant, it's forty thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. But it's what, but it's avail.
Doesn't even start to.
But it's available, it's available, you know, we have the resources to apply for it, hopefully we'll get it. It's forty thousand dollars that we didn't have. Unfortunately, that's addressed very specifically. There are very specific things that we have to do with the forty thousand dollars, does not include infrastructure repairs. But, but that being said, yeah, it just goes to show that there really are no grants out there, that even when you're looking.
Because there are some people who can afford it, but there are some people who can't, especially right now where the tax rates went up, there's a, the rents are going up. Um, there are people who are trying to, you know, repair the homes. We have a lot of new developments, there are people that wanna move into the new developments and don't wanna move into the homes that have already been lived in that, you know, that, um, are, are sitting. So the homeowners are, are, you know, are, are get stuck, kinda, sort of, in a way.
Definitely.
And it's difficult, because they are trying to pay their mortgage, their rent, their taxes, not fall behind on their water, sewage bills, um, and if stuff is in need of repair and they don't have the money to do it, and it can cause a, a bigger problem, like sewage is gonna back up inside their house. So now they need, you know, it's the, the pros to come in, the serve pros and all of these people to come in and, and clean that. Sometimes it's covered by insurance, but sometimes it's not, because if you don't have flood insurance or all this other stuff, it falls into.
Definitely, thank you very much, Councilor Monte.
I'm, I still have the floor, it falls into all of those little things that are not underlined in their, in their homeowners' insurance. So, but we really need to look into that because it, it affects them, their livelihood, their tenants. It comes into their, um, their washers and dryers. I, I know, I've been down there Leroy, Knox, and, and they, they, we've had people moving out of there that, um, have owned their homes two, three years, that don't understand what the situation problem is over there, and all of a sudden they get stuck with that.
Definitely, thank you very much. Uh, councilors, any further questions? Okay, seeing there's none, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Uh, moving on to communications from the mayor, city official, and city attorney, document eighty-nine sixteen, proposed five-year financial forecast and users' guide and assumptions he was based on the agenda by Mayor Rivera. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, councilors, thank you, Council President. We have a presentation to put before you. Thank you for the time. You should have in your packets, uh, two documents. One should read proposed five-year financial forecasts and users' guides and assumptions. Looks a little like, like this in your packets. Now you should have a larger document that is the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. That one has a second page or a third page that looks like this. Mr. President, City Council, what we have before you, this is kinda loud. Once they start the projector is, um, a PowerPoint presentation that's gonna go through, um, the forecast and capital improvement plan. Last week, we came before you, or last meeting, we came before you with the financial policies. So if the financial policies, um, are the roadmaps to building the budgets, um, the forecast gives us kind of the, uh, the lay of the land, where we are financially. And the capital improvements really is gonna help us continue to have, um, well-maintained roads. I tried to keep the whole picture in mind, but, um, we're gonna have, um, a member of the team from the, from the Collins Center come up and talk about what forecasts are. And then the overseer's gonna come and talk about the capital improvement plan, and in the end, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, um, what this all means for us. But the forecast and the capital, the forecast is driving a lot of the decisions we make. And if you look at the document, and we're in the dark, I know, there are, um, pages that say how much revenue we're gonna get in the next five years, expected revenues, and how much expenditures we expect to do in the next five years. And that drives the decision-making process around the budget, it's gonna help us when we have conversations with labor contracts. Um, and it's just overall gonna help us be smarter in the way we spend money. And the capital improvement plan, as you know, we don't, we haven't had one in a generation, and this will be the first time that we'll look at how can we spend money from the forecast through the budgeting process to do things, uh, to plan to spend money that are large ticket items. So I'm gonna have Rick from the Collins Center come up and talk a little bit first about how we built the forecast and it's page, in the forecast, it's page three and four. The re, after the revenues and expenditures, yeah, three and four in the, in your bu, in your, um, your forecast packet. Rick? Did I get that right?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Rivera. Uh, Mr. President, members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to be here before you today to give you a little introduction of, as to what the forecast is all about, how we put it together, um, you know, what, what it can be used for. Because I think that's real important to understanding the power of this tool. The objective that we set out to accomplish was to project revenues and expenditures for the city of Lawrence out five years. And we, we tried to do this as conservatively as possible, and I'll give you a little background as to why. You know, if you think about city finances, there's all kinds of moving parts, right? There's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of risk involved, everything's moving, everything's changing. But the beauty of, of putting together a revenue and expenditure forecast, if you, if you're conservative on the revenues and the expenditures, when you take that model as a whole, it's pretty accurate. There might be one or two things that are a little off, um, but on the whole, it represents a fair and reasonable picture of the city's finances. And why is that important? Well, it gives you an analytical tool to analyze financial strategies, financial policies, to look at how future capital costs, uh, will play out in that forecast. And it allows you to, uh, do a little what-if planning in terms of pay raises for employees, what, what might that cost? How does that ripple out into future years? So I think that's very powerful. And the way we put this forecast together was we worked with Mark Iannello, the CFO, and his financial team, they were all very helpful, uh, in informing, uh, some of the detail behind the numbers that really helped drive the projection. So their help was very much appreciated. And, and the way we set this up is it's designed to mirror your tax rate. So it includes all the expenses of the city of Lawrence, including the amounts that don't get appropriated, uh, you know, that are raised on your tax rate. So the reason we, we work from that tax rate is to make sure we don't forget anything. It makes it a comprehensive picture of the city's financial situation. So, so I think, I think this is a huge plus for the city, it's something the city has not had in the past, and it's something that's looked very favorably, uh, by the bond rating agencies, as well as your state, uh, overseer. So I think it's, it's a real important advance for the city, I think, and, but the beauty of it will be, uh, going forward and using it as we, we go ahead. So so the, the model itself is basically a series of Excel spreadsheets. And there's a detailed revenue projection, it projects the tax levy, state aid by various accounts, your local receipts. Uh, and then it does the same thing on the expenditure side, item by item. Uh, and then that all flows into a summary worksheet, which is, uh, which is on the next, next page here, I'll show you real quickly. So that's, that's where it's all boils down, and into the summary sheet, where you can really assess the city's bottom line. And it, and the, the, as I said, the power of this is it, if you wanna know how much, uh, a capital project is gonna cost that you can fund from your regular, uh, tax revenue, you can, you can factor that in and you can see what the impact is, and see whether you can afford it or not. So it's very powerful. The approach we used was to assume that the city would maintain the existing level of services into the future, five years into the fut, into the future, and what would that cost? So that's, that's how the spreadsheet is set up. Uh, we assume that all mass general laws currently in place remain in place, all state regulations remain in place. Uh, you know, that's important for things like chapter seventy-eight. And, and the bottom line is that, uh, you know, you, you can also factor in what it costs if you're considering collective bargaining increases. If you're at the bargaining table and you offer a, a particular wage settlement, you can just plug those numbers in here and see what it, how it impacts the bottom line, particularly two or three years out. Because that's, uh, you know, the raise you give today might not be affordable, uh, in year three. So that's a brief overview of the financial forecasting model, and I think, I'll. Yeah. So you see, um, does this have a pointer? It's not. Doesn't seem to be. I'm not seeing it. Oh, wait, I see it somewhere, but it's not going where I'm pointing. Anyway, um, so you can see how the revenues are broken out by the various, uh, revenue sources, property tax levy, your cherry sheet, school building assistance reimbursement, your estimated local receipts, and available funds. And that's all tallied up, and the expenditures we go through, uh, basically those are set up in more detail on the expenditure sheet, but for this, they're collapsed into the, uh, general categories, general government, public safety, uh, education, public works, uh, health and human services, culture and recreation. Uh, but the D, there's more detail behind these numbers in the detailed, uh, expenditure sheet. So you can see that FY sixteen is in balance because that's all based on your tax rate, uh, which is in, which is in balance at the time you set it. But may not be, hopefully you're, you're doing a little better than that now. But, cause everything changes, obviously. Once that, once the ink is dry on that tax rates, your actual revenues are fluctuating as, as are your expenses. So you can see, we showed the impact of a collective bargaining increase, and this is for just city-side employees, it does not include school employees, nor does it include enterprise fund employees, because the enterprise fund employees raises will be funded within the enterprise, uh, rate structure, is my understanding. So, so you can see the impact, uh, you know, collective bargaining, a two percent increase costs seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, and if you do the same thing each year, you can see that by twenty twenty-one, it costs you four and a half million dollars. Uh, so, a, and that significantly affects the, the city's bottom line, as you can see. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
I just wanted to point a couple of things out here. So you can see the projected revenues, again, this is just based on the model of what we've been spending year to day, the, in the previous years. The same thing with the expenditures. Um, a, a, and we're gonna, we're gonna use this as a tool, so when we go into the, um, we, we go into negotiations, even when we're building the budget, we're gonna say, listen, this is all the money we have. There's no, there's no extra money hanging around, there's no, you know, the, this is the best we can do, given all of our current financial, um, obligations. This helps us to tell the world, hey, this is what the health of the city is. And if somebody comes with a request for, it doesn't even just have to be collective bargaining agreement, if somebody wants to, um, you know, have the city build something big or do some, you know, spend money that we can't use, we, we can say, look, this is what the, the projected numbers are. We just can't afford those things. And this is, that's the way the tool that we see it as, it's based, like you said, there's a bunch of spreadsheets below. But this is in your packet, and then you could take it out and keep it with you, and we have the discussion about the budget, and say, listen, how are we doing versus this projection? And, and I'm not talking out of term when I say that models get a little weaker as they go out in years, because you can't really tell what's gonna happen five years from now, but the closer we are, I think it is, it's a strong model to talk about the la, the, the closest two years between now and eighteen. Um, we could have a windfall in state aid, uh, but the opposite could happen too, we could have a cut on state aid, and the revenues that you see from, um, state aid and cherry sheets can go down and not up. But I wanna just make those two things, this is a tool that we're gonna use as we go building budgets and we start talking about spending money. And now the overseer's gonna talk about, um, financial policies. Long-range financial.
Good evening, it's good to be back. Uh, two weeks ago, we said we'd be back with a forecast and a capital plan, which, again, were the three things that I had talked about, about a year ago, just under a year ago, um, as being the three real important pieces, uh, for the city, uh, to really improve its financial, uh, condition and, and really think long-term. And this diagram up there, relatively simple, but I think it's pretty powerful because it tells you, you just received financial policies, and I know next week we'll be with the, uh, subcommittee reviewing those. Though, that then informed the forecast, so the model that Rick just ran through mirrors those policies. And then the capital plan comes out linked to both the policies and the forecast, so also, as Rick said, if you're making a decision about borrowing more money, it ripples through the forecast and you're able to see what happens when you do that. If you're talking about, you know, a two and a half percent increase versus a two percent, you can see the ripple effect over multi-year, um, cycle. So very simple, but three very powerful tools. And at the end of the day, what you should have is a annual budget document from the mayor that mayor that clearly shows the issues that the city has, the plan to address those, both short-term and long-term. So taken together, these things will not just improve the city, but, believe me, the rating agencies look for these things. So next time you have a ratings call with Moody's and S&amp;P, you'll be able to tell them, we have policies, we have a forecast, and we have a capital plan. And that will work very well in terms of your rating from those agencies. So the capital improvement plan, talked about this again just about a year ago, but it comes from a couple of different sources. And the document, and I should thank the Collins Center, because they did a really, really great job pulling this together. A couple of folks who are on here tonight really did a fantastic job working with the city, the mayor, the department heads, putting it together, and then the team of us on the financing behind it. So what you see here is, it's one document, it's the capital plan, but it comes from different revenue sources. You've got one-time revenues, things like free cash, or if you have an overlay surplus that you could transfer, if you sell city property, you could use that. One-time revenue, one-time expenditures. Operating budget, we'll talk in a couple of minutes about a pays-as-you-go component. But another thing to note, and it's very powerful, is if you invest in certain areas, it will save you on the operating side. So technology is a great example of that. You make some, you know, one-time expenditures in technology, that should help you long-term on your operating budget. So that's why that arrow goes both ways. Grants, MSBA, I think would be the most powerful of these. We've met with the MSBA, Mass. School Building Authority, about partnering with the city on both some smaller projects and some larger projects. You see those in the capital plan. The city, on paper, is an 80% reimbursement rate, but when you go through the math with them, the way that it works, it will be slightly less than 80%, but that's still a very large reimbursement percentage, which is great. And then enterprise funds, just sat through the water and sewer discussion, that's all accounted for in the CIP, funded through the enterprise funds. So it's one document that pulls together all of the different funding sources. So the key recommendations, and this would be, you know, if you walk away with one slide, this would be the one to walk away with, because this is what we're really hoping the city implements. First thing is, at a minimum, as existing debt runs off, that you backfill it with new debt. Second, establish a pays-as-you-go component, which means, instead of borrowing for a $500,000 pumper, you could pay for that in cash. You save the interest cost on that. And then lastly, by using new growth and your property tax levy, which has been relatively healthy over the last few years, over a five-year period, you can grow your commitment from 6.35% of revenue to 7.5%. And let me just say that, we don't want to get into too much of the detail. We'll do that with the subcommittee and then come back. But revenue here is defined as net revenue, which is basically your total revenue less state aid for schools, and your debt is total debt less the deficit financing notes. So if you were to actually take debt divided by revenue, you're above 3%, which is actually a pretty low number. But in the policies, we defined what net revenue was, we defined what net debt was. So going forward, it will be calculated that way, and right now, you're at 6.35%, and this plan grows you to 7.5%. So this little picture attempts to show how that works. So right now, look at the orange line, the one that's going downward. That shows if you issue no more debt, that's your debt service as a percent of revenue, net revenue, over this five-year period. So at a minimum, you should backfill that drop-off up to the solid black line to keep at 6.5% of revenue, 6.35%, I'm sorry, revenue. And then above that line, it's the proposal to use new growth at $300,000 a year to augment the capital budget for both pays-as-you-go, and you can actually leverage that for additional debt service. So by doing those two things, you go from 6.35% up to 7.5% over this five-year period. So why? You know, why do that? So a basic assumption, 20-year term and 4% interest in using level principal, you know, these will end up being 10, some of these projects are 10-years, some of them 15, depending upon that, your rate would be lower, you might want to use level debt service, et cetera. But the math I did, 20-year term, 4% interest in level principal. So each million-dollar project will cost you $90,000 a year in debt service, using those assumptions. So if you follow the policy in fiscal '17, there's $250,000 of new debt. You get that by staying at 6.35%. That yields a $2.8 million project, or a couple of projects add up to $2.8 million. So it's a pretty powerful tool, you know? Debt, when managed well, can really transform a city. So here, for $250,000 a year for 20 years, you've got a $2.8 million project. So over the term of this, the five-year CIP, you can fund in the ballpark of, you know, $33 to $36 million in projects. $20 to $22 million of that is coming by the recommendation to stay at your current debt as a percent of revenue. If you take the recommendation, which I hope you would, of using new growth for both debt finance and pays-as-you-go, there's another $13 to $14 million worth of capital projects over this multi-year period. So that's why we recommend taking this approach. And then just a couple of final graphs. So in terms of dollar values, what you see up top is that there's a small pays-as-you-go component in fiscal '17, '18, '19, and it grows. And then beneath that is the additional debt service that you would take on to leverage projects, both from staying at 6.35% and using new growth. Below it, it shows how you get from 6.35% up to 7.5% if you add those two numbers, the pays-as-you-go and the debt finance. So again, it's a recommendation that I hope the city, and we'll certainly spend a lot more time with the subcommittee going through in detail with it, but it's a really solid financial plan for capital. It's certainly not out of whack in any way, shape, or form. The city's under-invested over time in its infrastructure, and this is an approach that will hopefully get you there. And then to close, my piece, and then I'll turn it back over to the mayor. This is exactly what I said just about a year ago, said that the city really needs to start thinking long-term. And in order to do that, you need a capital plan with policies, you need reserve levels, you've got to figure out how to use free cash, and you need a forecast. And over the last week or two, we've been here before you presenting those three things. So very happy to have been able to, you know, work with the mayor and his team, and with the Collins Center, to be able to develop these with you. And the last thing I'll say, actually, before I turn it over, is these are tools. So as Rick said, it's an Excel spreadsheet. Capital financing, you know, you've got to run different debt models. My opinion is that the current level of staffing within your finance team isn't sufficient to do what it should be doing, let alone taking on these types of important projects. So I would hope during the budget cycle that there's discussion about having some sort of budget analyst, or financial analyst, or performance measurement analyst, whatever you want to call it, that will be on board to help do a lot of the budget grunt work, that will be able to take over these tools, because this isn't something that you just do once and shut off your computer. During your budget cycle, these things are refreshed as new information comes in. So you really need somebody who can help out Mark and his team, Mayor and his team, to really implement these, because if you just take it and put it aside and use it once a year, you're not going to get out of it what you should get out of it. So I'll certainly talk about that again as the budget cycle moves forward, but, you know, turn it over to the mayor to finish up.
Councilors, I'd like to take this moment to say, I know you guys are thinking, what the heck are we talking about? There's a lot of numbers here. There's a lot of information. Know that we do not expect that you would be prepared to have an intelligent conversation about this, because you just got this last week. But the couple of things that I will tell you, and what he talked about, is, in general, we're taught that debt is a bad thing on an individual basis, as long as you kept your scores right. That's not always a great thing to have. But for municipality, what the people that we borrow money from that say whether or not we're good in financial status see, that if we're not borrowing money to fix our vehicles, our buildings, our streets and sidewalks, our infrastructure, that we're not doing the right things by the city. So they expect that we're going to have a level of borrowing, and this capital improvement plan is a plan to spend money on the things that we think are important. So the council's role in that process is, I present to you, like, what you have tonight in your packet is a capital improvement plan, and you take it back to committee, you bring it back up and do a public hearing. You get two votes on this thing. So you do the public hearing to vote on the actual plan. Sometime in the future, after we pass the budget, we will review whether or not we have the financial conditions to pay for the year one of the capital improvement plan. At this point, I would say, it looks like we will, but I don't want to definitively say that we will. We won't know that till afterwards, whether or not we're in a good financial position, to bring before you a loan authorization to pay for that first year of the plan. Let me say that again. You're going to vote tonight on this plan. It's a five-year plan, and I'm going to point out some documents in your packet. And then sometime after we do the budget, we're going to say, hey, does it make sense to go out and do the capital improvement plan year one? Mark Iannello, his staff, the overseer, say, yeah, we have that debt. Bringing that debt on makes a lot of sense. And we'll bring it down before you, and there'll be a list of projects that will go there. Once we do that, then you go through the whole process again. You go send it to the subcommittee, you take votes down there, you bring it back, and we have a public hearing on that matter. Tonight, we're only moving this item as a plan. You go down to the subcommittee, bring it up. No borrowing, no commitments on that. It's just the plan. If you look in your packets, page 24 of the capital improvement plan, this is worth getting out, because I want you to fold the, there's actually a list of projects. So if you go page 24 of the capital improvement plan, it looks like it's a spread, can we get the lights just real quick? Yeah, I think we're done. That's the last, that's the last. It's page 24, it looks like this. That's the, and then if you go to page 26 and page 27, those are the list of the projects. You want to just, if your packet is loose, just pull them out. If not, just bend the air, because those are the important, you're going to see in the list of the projects and what year they come through. Did you guys find it?
If we are looking at our iPads, it will be on page 30.
There you go.
30. On your iPads.
Page 24? There's actually no number at the bottom. You've got to go, if you find page 23, then go to the next page. You're close. Couple more.
What I have is...
Keep on. Yeah? No, it's blank?
It's an entire project listing.
It's a, not to be confused with the financial forecast document.
Councilor, I think it's page 25 in your packet, depending on the way they printed.
The only reason why I think it's important for us to find them is because in that, in those documents, is the list of items. And at the top of the, of page 24, FY '17, that's the list of the projects that if we decide, after the budget gets passed, that we are going to go into debt, to what projects they are, that's the list of projects. The only other thing that I will show you is that to the left, if you go across the top, it says a bunch of years, and then it says the total project cost, general fund debt, and then there's a bunch of things. After you see all those numbers, and we'll, again, I'll send this down, and the subcommittee will spend a little bit more time, but I wanted you guys to see these pages, because this is the things that we would actually spend money on. After the numbers seem to stop, on the other side of it, that's other sources of revenue that we would use. And you could see that for the parks there, you know, we're going to get a grant for $404,000 for a park that we expect is going to cost us $577,000 to fix. And so I just want you guys to know that there's, when you look at these projects on page 24, 26, and 28, that's how you read them. Across the top, it tells you what year they're in. All right? Yeah, and so Sum's debt, page 26 is debt, and 24 is debt, 26 is pays-as-you-go. The important part of this list is, when you guys approve this plan, that this is a plan. And then, let's say we decide we're going to borrow after we pass the budget to fund the plan, you will get another vote on the list. You guys with me? Now, how do we come up with the list? The UMass Collins Center spent a lot of time with our department heads. The original number was something crazy, like $364 million worth of projects. We clearly can't afford to do those over five years. We probably couldn't afford to do that over 20 years. So we boiled them down to the number that we could afford every year with the model that they built, keeping debt at 7.5% of total revenues. Some of that means, as some of the borrowing we had in the past falls off, that we add new ones, and then with the issue of the new growth. This is a decision that we have to make together. So if you decide, when we bring this before you later on, that it doesn't make any sense for us to buy two dump trucks for DPW at $100,000, then we can just vote not to do that. And let's say you, you know, we say, hey, you know what we really need to do? We do really need to do that, the library HVAC, the air conditioner. We can agree to do that. But we'll make those decisions together. It won't be just like me sending it down to you guys without having any previous discussion. This plan is our plan, and then when we go to borrow, it'll be our projects together that we'll get to know. But the important thing is for us to actually pass a plan, so that everybody knows that we have a plan, even though we may never spend 100% of it, come down the road. So that's our thing, we have the two votes, the votes on this is just to, once it comes back from committee, is to accept the plan. And as you saw in the presentation, we have till, till May 17th to vote on the plan. That's by ordinance. Okay? Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you much, Mr. Overseer, for the information that you have provided us tonight. Councilors, at this point, I am looking for a motion. Per City Charter, Section 7.4, Letters C and D, the city council is required to order a public hearing within seven days of submission by the mayor. I am looking for a motion to order a public hearing at this moment for April 19th.
So moved.
Motion has, is there any discussion? Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it to order a public hearing for April 19th. Councilors, I would like to submit the following two documents to... Document 8915 and 9016, 8916 and 9016, to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. So once again, on April 19th, we will hold a public hearing for the capital improvement plan. Per City Charter, we are required to order a public hearing within seven days of the mayor submitting it to the city clerk. Moving on to appropriation orders and resolutions, Document 6516. Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Yes, I think we do. Mr. Iannello is still here?
Through you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify that on the free cash transfers, we need to order a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, Council President, that we order for a public hearing, Document 6516, appropriation transfer of the Lawrence Department of Public Works from free cash... 6516, appropriation transfer of the Lawrence Department of Public Works from Free Cash to fund some street lighting proposal for the sum of $99,592.20.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 7016, Vice President LaPlante.
Budget Committee voted unanimous vote to send this item, 70/16, an appropriation transfer from Free Cash to city streets and sidewalk cleanup. This is called the Clean Street Initiative. And since it's coming from Free Cash, we need to order a public hearing and make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's to order the public hearing, correct?
That's to order the public hearing. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 9816, is an appropriation transfer of funds for veteran services from pension assessment account to veterans director salary on the amount of $65,000, and it's going down to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Now moving on to committee reports, Document 6716. Mr. Vice President LaPlante.
Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimous recommendation is take this document up. This is the Mass Works Merrimack Project, I'm sorry, Merrimack Street Improvement Project. That's a supplemental grant for $800,000, and this provides authorization to expend the state grants, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 9215, House Community Agreement, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Document 92-15 is the House Community Agreement TIF ordinance that came out with a favorable recommendation pending a documentation that Council Armonte is going to provide us tonight. And I make that as a formal motion, as a committee report.
Motion has been made to approve as a committee report.
Second.
And properly second. On June 30th, 2015, we held a public hearing on this item, and it came back to the council for review, pending some documentation from Council Armonte, which has been submitted.
The documentation was submitted by Abel, which is in the packet.
By Director Vargas.
I'm sorry?
Director Vargas.
Correct. And it was just a clarification of the wording for the ordinance.
It would have to go back to the city attorney because it's being reworded.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow along.
That is what I would like to do this evening.
So there's...
Are we doing this tonight?
Right now, we have a motion to approve as a committee report. Why don't we accept it as a committee report at this moment?
Mm-hmm. I second that.
So the motion has been made and properly second, seeing there's no further discussion on this matter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselors, at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to send this item to the city attorney for review.
For review of the language for the ordinance.
And then it's going to go back to the ordinance or come here?
Comes back to us.
To us.
We will table the document at this level, waiting for the response from the city attorney.
All right, no problem.
So...
I made that motion.
So a motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor, Vice President LaPlante.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, President, help me just understand, the city attorney has already opined on this, and he's always given some, his preliminary draft language. So I'm still just a little confused. Is there, since he provided that information, is there new information that he now needs to incorporate into the document?
Well, it was to my understanding that...
Council Armonte.
I'm sorry, thank you. Through you, Council President. It was my understanding that the ordinance committee or other members of this body had some questions regarding how much the percentage should be, if there was an allowance as in to them not being able to get a TIF if they didn't comply, and other reasons as to review. I believe you had some questions on that, so I'm not sure if you worked on your part to have that reviewed. If not, I mean, I would like it passed as I presented.
I do, I do have questions, so...
Counselor LaPlante, are you also?
I just have that question. I think that this is an opportunity, this was provided to us during the last council. And of course, we do have new city councilors here, so, you know, we need to figure out exactly if they're comfortable. And let's face it, this was provided to us when, June, May 27th, it came out of the committee. So it's been, it's been a while. And we sort of, we kind of need to, with all due respect, we kind of need to kind of go through this a little bit more and have a...
Well, that is, that is why I had suggested that we meet it as a committee in the whole, so that all of us could discuss this at one point. But it was decided by our council president and by other members of this body that they didn't want it that way.
That's fine.
And that's the reason why I had it. I had asked that we...
We do have a motion to send it to the city attorney.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez, had a question?
I had already made that motion.
Yeah. Counselor Rodriguez.
So we're going to send it to the attorney? Okay, that's fine. Later on, when they come back, I have my questions.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. Can I please get a motion to table Document 9215?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Moving on to Document 6616, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Subcommittee.
Thank you, Council President. This, Document 66-15 is a national grid Verizon in New England requests permission to locate pole where it's in fixtures, and that came out to order a public hearing, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to withdrawal items, there's none. All business. Document 11315 is an amendment to appropriation and loan order, 2014 LN02, which appropriated Executive session is anticipated.
Thank you, counselors. This is the item that we were hoping that we could spend some time in executive session on, if people have the appetite to get into the business this evening, that we would be willing for us. If not, we could definitely wait and do this at the subcommittee level. But the item is of extreme import, and whatever is in your pleasure.
Is there any information that could be discussed publicly at this level to...
There is not. It's matters to do with litigation and strategy.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselor Maldonado.
This item, in order to amend...
Counselor Maldonado, can we, just for purposes of discussion, can, would you be willing to make a motion to approve so we could engage in a discussion?
Well, actually, we need to order a public hearing.
Yeah, but we cannot engage in a discussion without having a motion.
Okay. No, I made the motion, yes.
Second.
So the motion has been made for purposes of discussion and properly second. Counselor Maldonado.
Yes. In order to amend the appropriation of the loan, we need to conduct a public hearing. And what I would like to do is, if the council chooses not to go into an executive session to discuss the details, what I would like to do is to make a motion to order a public hearing on this amendment.
For our following...
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made and properly second to order a public hearing. Any discussion?
Discussion. We are, sorry about that, Council President. We are prepared to talk in executive session if you'd like to do that this evening.
I'm sorry?
We are prepared to talk in executive session if you're prepared to do that this evening.
Okay. Counselors, would you like to enter into executive session?
No.
Counselor Abdu, their motion.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I think you're required to be specific if you can about the subject matter of the executive session. I don't think you can discuss a loan in the executive session, but there are other exemptions you can cite to the opening law that lie in the executive session, a loan is a one.
Yeah. So just for clarity, the matter of the loan, it needs to be talked about in executive session because it's a matter of a lawsuit and strategy around lawsuit. So that's a definite reason we can go into executive session.
You can justify the lawsuit, but I think that can get...
Counselor Abdu, will you please be specific as to the purpose of our executive session? Similar to the...
Motion to go into executive session, discuss this item, 11315, for the matters of appropriation of loan order and specific to legal matters. We can say, through you, Mr. President, we can certainly say the litigation matter. I mean, that's, I think the comment is correct.
Yeah, I...
That's not going to betray any confidence or give anybody an advantage to say that we're talking about it.
You're required to...
Yeah, the matter has to do with the lawsuit on 237-255 Essex Street.
There you go.
I'm sorry, did you hear that?
237-255 Essex Street.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. It has been properly identified, and we're going to do a roll call.
Roll call on matter of whether or not to go into executive session on Counsel Abdu's motion as enunciated, seconded by Counsel Rodriguez. Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez noted. Counsel Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Armonte.
Yes.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel DePena.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes, the motion carries. I will ask anyone who's in the audience to please clear the room at this moment in order for us to entertain, enter into executive session.